Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell's Attorney Appeals Public Hearing for June 9th. Just a few reminders: if you have a cell phone device or electronic device, if you can turn it off or put it on silent so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, we appreciate it. Also, folks, you can join the meeting tonight by calling in and/or through Zoom with planning with DPD ahead of time. All right, we're moving to continue business. We have ZBA-2025-17. Position is a variance. Applicant is Peter D., property located at 84 Walker Street. The applicant has applied to Lowell's Attorney Appeals. He's seeking the variance approval to add additional paving to the property at 84 Walker Street. The subject props located in traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 6.1 for relief from the driveway dimensional requirements and any other relief required in the Lowell's ordinance.
Peter Dendermeres.
Thank you.
Peter Dendermeres is the applicant.
Anyone here for 84 Walker Street? Yeah? Do you want to just come to the lectern, sir? You want to just give us any new information updates since we last saw you, folks?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, we sent over the measurements as requested by the planning board. Did you have a chance to review the measurements? I know there was, I think, a couple of questions Peter mentioned that the board had regarding the measurements.
Yep. Is all you have to say, sir, for right now?
I believe that was all. There was a question about the trees. So there are three large trees surrounding the building as well as two bushes. There's some room for a couple of extra trees up front to help with the urban heat effect. I also spoke with Tim French, who said that Litchfield is a private way, Litchfield Terrace. And I think that's all I have at the moment. Is that correct?
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, now we move the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I am Jana Talamas again, resident of 42 Litchfield Terrace. And I think, as he just stated, Litchfield Terrace is a private way, a little horseshoe street. And where they're requesting to put a driveway that's not there now enters and exits off of Litchfield Terrace, which is a private way. And I did have that on my list to talk about, that I did find out it was a private way. And they did, Litchfield Terrace was on the list to be paved in 2024. And it was, and I submitted a ticket requesting that. Someone called me and they told me they couldn't touch the street because it was a private way and it was owned by the residents of Litchfield Terrace, the homeowners of Litchfield Terrace. They closed my ticket and subsequently the street was never paved. There is no existing driveway there. And here, you know, again, to refresh your memory, I had this stuff last time. There's, you know, a yard and a fence that was taken down. And, you know, again, this is happening up and down Walker Street where people are just parking in front of their houses on the mud paths. But I'm not here to fight that fight. I'm here to just say that it's a private way. And where it comes around like this, their property where they're looking to put in a driveway, it enters, exits right across from my house at 42 Litchfield Terrace. And they already...
Do you want to show them the pictures?
Well, they have, if you want to look at the pictures, you can, but...
If you want to submit them a little...
Sorry, some of them were not well when I tried to get them developed and it's really hard to see.
Thank you.
On the back is the address of, you know, where people are just parking wherever they want up and down Walker Street. But again, that's, I'm here for my street tonight, Litchfield Terrace.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Thank you so much.
All right, anyone else wish to speak in opposition's petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, scene on that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wish to speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor, scene on the public hearing's close. We're going to open and question the comments to the board. The board recognizes, the chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate the updated site plan from the applicants. The one question I have, and this is probably geared towards Peter. This is considered a private way. So what purview does the board have? I mean, if the fact that, who owns the private way? It's all the residents?
So when I spoke with the engineering department, they said it's a private way, but since it's the driveway, we can, it has no bearings as to whether we pave it or not. To their point, where we own the building since 2013, all of our tenants have been parking there with no issue. Not really sure why it's an issue now. So we just want to pave that one spot to...
Just a clean-up place, basically. I know. So I know they don't want additional parking there. So I know that the residents don't want additional parking there, which I understand because that would, it's already very tight back there, especially when it snows. But that one spot that we're looking to pave, every tenant we've had since over 12 years now has parked in that area. So we're just looking to clean that up, basically. As far as additional parking, there's not enough room for additional parking, so we can't do that. So that's all we're looking to do at the moment.
So you're not looking for additional parking? You're looking to pave the existing spot that's there?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. One second, I will let you speak in a minute. And I'm sorry, it's eight feet, is that what I'm seeing here?
Eight feet wide, but 21 feet long.
So from a zoning perspective, I guess it makes sense, but I'm still stuck on the private way. Does every resident, every owner of property has part ownership of that spot?
I believe so. Every resident of Litchfield Terrace is a part owner of Litchfield Terrace, I think, at least.
Peter, that would be considered true?
Yeah, I would have to double-check with law, but they abut the private way, so I think they also have a right to use it even if their address given by engineering is on Walker Street.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's what I was looking for. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Point of clarification, I believe I asked a similar question at your last appearance. You're creating, you're not even creating a new spot. You're looking to put pavement under space where one of your tenants currently parks.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, could I speak with the abutter, please?
Where he said...
All right, just a minute. Do you agree with what they said that during the history of their ownership, that they've had a resident parking there?
There was a resident park in there and where he said there were no problems. That's incorrect because my husband's truck was hit backing out and they hit it. And that was, as the pictures that I showed you, people are just creating their own parking spots. This is not, it was never a parking spot and someone just decided to pull up in that spot. People can do whatever they want and it's happening all over my neighborhood as I just, you know, presented those pictures. They're doing it all up and down Walker Street. So to say it was always there and it was never a problem, it was a problem. They backed up and slammed right into...
All right, that's one incident.
Pardon me?
That's one incident. A car backed up, accidents happen.
The point is, it doesn't make it a driveway because someone has chosen to park on it.
Have you spoken with your other neighbors?
Have I spoken with my other neighbors regarding...
Do any of them feel the same way you do?
Oh, yeah, my neighbors and...
And none of them decided to come here and join you in this?
No, but I haven't spoken to them specifically about this because it doesn't affect, I live directly across. What I've spoken to them about is Litchfield Terrace being a private way. That's what I've spoken to them about.
All right, and I had the same question as Mr. Proko, whether this was within our purview with respect to a private way. I mean, I, I'm not a legal expert. I'm not sure that I'm an expert in anything. But I don't understand how we would have any purview if this is all private.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear at all. You don't understand unless it's all private?
If this is private, when? Why is it before us? Peter?
You can still regulate what's on a property. Generally, like the way we try to explain it to residents, zoning is usually about private property, like what you own. Obviously, it's pretty rare that we see a private way. But you can definitely regulate what is on their plot of land.
Okay. And this parking space, which already exists, is just simply not paved. You agree that there's a parking space there?
No, I don't agree that it's...
So there's no one that parks there?
There's an abandoned car that's parking there. That car hasn't moved. I don't know.
Well, that's a separate issue. There shouldn't be an abandoned car there. Have you done anything to try to have that abandoned car removed?
Have I?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Well, I would think it's a private way. You live there. That would be an eyesore.
It's not on Litchfield Terrace. Litchfield Terrace is a little horseshoe where the car is parked. First of all, there's not enough space for even a car to park there as far as lengthwise, but it's on their property. And I can't go and have a tow remove, a car removed from their property. You know, if it was on Litchfield Terrace, then I would speak to my neighbors and if a car was abandoned there and...
Well, if there's an abandoned car, there is, you do have rights as an abutter. Yeah, you could do something. You're here tonight expressing your displeasure with what they proposed to do. I would think that if there was another, an abandoned vehicle there that you find an eyesore, that you would also...
What I would do would email the city and...
Right, right. I'm not trying to be confrontational. I'm just trying to, you know, how is this vehicle really an inconvenience to you? There was one accident, somebody backed into it, and this is going to be...
It's too many for me. One is too many. And again, why should, why should someone whose address is 8486 Walker Street have access to Litchfield Terrace that's private?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me go to my photos here. So I just want to mention that the city has requirements for documents that are submitted for variance. Are you familiar with those documents, the requirements that the city has in the zoning bylaws?
Everything that Peter had requested, I brought him to in a timely fashion. So I think we met all the requirements. If there's something missing, I'm happy to give it to the city. Not a problem.
What I'm specifically talking about is the... Let's see what it's called. Under Section 11.2, Board of Appeals, variance prerequisites. So documents that you submit as a prerequisite. So we asked for a dimensioned plan for parking. And I believe what you gave us was the previous engineer's plan. And some, someone put pen notes on it as to what they thought the dimensions were. So what the requirement under 11.2.3 and then, let's see, 11.2.4 plans. An applicant for relief before the Board of Appeals shall submit a plan containing the following data. A, it shall be drawn at a scale of 1 inch equals 20 feet unless another scale is requested and found suitable by the board. The plan B shall be prepared by a registered land surveyor, professional engineer, or architect. And C, the scale date in North Arrow shall be shown. That's important because what you provided isn't a plan that is drawn to scale.
We sent over the measurements of the proposed paving and I sent it over to Peter. I would have gotten more of a clarification or if it was needed. I thought that was sufficient.
So you have access to these documents that give you the prerequisites for variance, as anyone does. It's on lolmas.gov and you type in zoning bylaws or zoning book and it comes up. And you can do that information search yourself. You're asking us as a city to inform you as to what the prerequisites are when they're already available online? Is that what it is? I'm confused because we asked for a plan with dimensions and you gave me something that... Well, that's beside the point. But what you gave us doesn't meet the prerequisites for the variance requirement for a plan.
So you need a surveyor to do the plans up again, is what you need?
Let's start with that we should have someone looking over the document that's before us that will assure us that what is on there is accurate.
The survey was done, though.
Okay.
And the survey was accurate.
All right, the, I got comments from the transportation engineer today, this afternoon. So the transportation engineer submitted comments to the board. And they state, or she states, that there really is only one area that would classify as a parking space, which is against the fence and is 8 by 21 according to the measurements of the plan. The city standard is nine feet wide. So she doesn't understand the plan that you sent over either. I think you're looking for two parking spaces on the, you're looking for one.
That's correct, one space.
You're looking for one.
That's right.
But you dimensioned another space against the fence as 8 by 20, or is it 8 by 21?
That was the adjacent area that we were looking to pave, just to pave and not to make it an official space.
Right now, just a dirt pile there and we're looking just to pave it because every time it rains, there's mud all over, all over the area. And our tenants have been complaining for years about the mud in the area.
You can plant grass. You can put pavers down, but you don't have to pave it. There are other options. Grass grows easily right now this time of year.
Yeah, if we're paving that one driveway, the existing driveway, which the 86R2 side is the main entrance, which is why we want it paved.
All right.
We want to pave the adjacent area.
But you're basically replacing an on-street parking space with an off-street parking space because you're basically losing access. You can park on Litchfield parallel to that space, correct?
Yes.
And if you pave that space on your property, you're denying access to that paved new parking space by parking somebody on Litchfield in front of it. So basically, you're losing that Litchfield parking space.
There's no parking space there right now.
The on-street parking space.
Someone's parked there right now. It does, you know, we're not blocking anyone's parking.
I don't see, I don't see how you're gaining any parking.
We're not trying to gain parking. We're trying to clean up the existing area that's around the primary entrance.
Where someone parks. I know, I know our neighbors there, they say that people don't park there. People have been parking there for 12 years.
I went by today and there's chairs there.
Excuse me?
No one's parking with, I went by today and there's lounge chairs there. No one's parking on top of the lounge chairs.
At the moment, over the past 12 years, every tenant we've had has parked their car there.
All right.
At this moment, there's, that car hasn't moved in quite some time. I agree, that is correct. They're going to get that out of there. In the past 12 years, someone has always parked there. Now, whether it's paved or not, that's fine, but someone will continue to park there. That's what's been going on. That's what will continue to go on.
I think you didn't meet the prerequisite for layout. And we asked for a dimensioned plan. The reason it's important is because someone could think this through clearly and find a way to do three off-street parking spaces, two of them being angled at 45 degrees, and give that property access to Litchfield Street at an angle that would allow for safe entry and exit onto your property and would benefit the property by having three off-street parking spaces.
So we took those measurements. There's not enough room for that. That was our original intent, but there's not enough room to do that.
You would need to use the concrete surface as well in order to accomplish...
I understand that. Again, we took those measurements. There's not enough room to do that. That's what we want to do, honestly. That, that would increase the value.
I think, I think you should have someone like an engineer look at this. I did a quick sketch before I came here to see if it's possible and I saw it was possible. So that's how I know.
It's definitely not possible, okay.
Well, it's possible based on the drawing that you gave us, which is maybe not to scale. Okay? So I would suggest we continue this. And you come before us with an engineered plan that shows the intent from an engineer's standpoint as to what you want to do. It's one parking space you're looking for that's parallel to Litchfield, which means you lose parking on Litchfield next to that. Whatever, you're cleaning up the dirt. You say you don't want to plant grass. You want to pave it because dirt's a problem for you, but grass is a harder problem to solve, I guess. So you have to pave it to the tune of a couple thousand dollars, which doesn't make any sense to me, but I'm just following this. I would say we continue it until you meet the prerequisites that we ask for in the zoning book for a plan that is to scale and is drawn and an engineer weighs in on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Kellman. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand what you guys are trying to do, but Dennis is, I kind of agree with Dennis that just drawing what you think the dimensions are on this is not satisfactory pursuant to what we are required to have. So, I mean, in retrospect, I mean, generally speaking, I mean, getting another car or two cars off the, off the street, I mean, would be good. I mean, I understand that Litchfield Terrace, there's some issues with Litchfield Terrace and that's Litchfield Terrace, we're finding out is a privately owned way. But we're here, no, because technically speaking, your property is located on Walker Street and Walker Street is not a private way. So that's why we're here. But I would, I would probably agree with them. I would probably suggest that we continue this and have, no, sort of the plans updated and certified plans that are required, that we're required to have showing the dimensions of the parking and whatnot. So, but I'll listen to my other fellow board members to what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellman. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I thought I knew what was happening here and then this conversation's kind of confused me. Member McCarthy made a good point. There's enough pavement here for multiple parking spots. Which paved area do you plan on using as a parking spot? The one that's parallel to Litchfield or the one that's perpendicular to Litchfield?
Perpendicular.
Okay, so the one that the abandoned car is on right now?
Correct.
Okay. So you wouldn't be losing the on-street parallel. So I guess it goes back to why do we really need to pave the grass on the parallel side when there's other landscaping remedies for that? What has been done to remedy the car that's abandoned sitting there since prior to our last meeting?
I spoke to the tenant. They instructed me that they were going to move it. They have not moved it, so I'm going to tow it myself.
Okay. So, I mean, you can see we're, we're trying to operate in good faith, but we're trying to make a parking spot, a parking spot that's been used for a car that's unusable, right? So what's the need for a parking spot if you're going to put a car that doesn't move into it? We can't have storage for unusable cars in the city.
I understand. At the moment, the car is unusable. It's not registered and whatnot. However, they have a car or they're looking to get a car and she wants to park it there.
Right. But it's more than at the moment because it's been there since prior to our last meeting. So it's been there for a while, is my point.
It has, yes.
Right, okay. So I, I'm all for off-street parking. I don't have a problem with it. I think this plan needs work. A, it needs to be to scale because, you know, the drawings aren't necessarily great because realistically, we're looking for, eight feet is not enough. So we need relief because you have to be three feet off the property line and three feet away from the property and we don't see where we are on this. So are we given six feet of relief? We have no idea because we don't know the measurements. So I think that's where that part comes in. And I, and I think the potential to abuse the additional pavement as another parking spot is there. And I don't want to see that happen. So I think there's other landscaping opportunities to remedy the mud or whatever the issue is there. But I would have to agree that this plot plan is not up to our standard. So we really don't know what we're approving here. I'm guessing you need a curb cut right now? The curb is not cut there?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's not on this plan either? We don't know how...
It's on the survey.
How wide's the curb cut on this?
Two and a half feet.
No, that's not.
That's what was on the survey, I mean.
Well, a curb cut's the way you drive the car through, so it's not two and a half feet.
I was thinking maybe the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay. So that's where we're going back, where we need, we need a professional plot plan done because a curb cut is probably going to be the same width of your pavement. It's going to be eight feet wide, I'm guessing, is what you want, eight to nine feet. So that's why we go back to, we don't really know what we're looking at here. We're just looking at some rudimentary sketches on this. So I would agree with Member McCarthy to continue this to get a updated plot plan that's done by a professional. And I would, you know, it would be my advice to look at landscaping remedies for that additional paving spot, not just pave it, A, because we need open space and B, because there's the potential of abuses using that dimensions for another parking spot, so.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Sir, I think you heard the comments of the board. I also think that this, the plan you have, you know, it's just not up to standard, up to snuff. So we'll continue this so you can provide an updated plot plan that's up to scale. Mr. Katrumbis, when is our next available opening hearing?
One second, sorry about that. We got new laptops, so we're all logged out of things. There's space on the next meeting on the 23rd.
Is June 23rd enough time for you to work with an engineer to get the certified plot plan, sir?
We can try, yeah. I can fill in Peter if we can't get it done in time.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that when you come before us again, that you list the variances that you're seeking. If your intent is to pave that 8 by 21-foot space, you're looking for a variance for side jut setback, setback between the pavement and the property line? It's a three-foot requirement to be green. If you're coming before us and you are paving that green, that 8 by 24-foot wide space, does that pavement go right to the pavement of the street? And if it does, that constitutes a curb cut. And so you'd be looking for relief for a curb cut because curb cut maximum dimension is 24 feet and your curb cut would probably be closer to 42 feet? and your curb cut would probably be closer to 42 feet. And then, of course, we have the relief that you're seeking for minimum usable lot area per dwelling unit. But those are the three that I see. So if you're asking the engineer to help you, please ask them to review zoning and see what variances you'll be seeking so that we'll all be able to understand what you're looking for.
Okay. And from your calculation, you said that you saw three diagonal spots were a possibility.
You know what? My humble opinion, but yes.
Yeah, we'll happy to look into it.
And wouldn't that be a nice thing to get?
Of course.
Yeah. And it would also provide more green area than you're currently showing. And I would mulch, whatever, gravel, but something that's allowing water to permeate through versus pour out onto the private way. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
I was going to take you.
Keep in mind, if there is a consideration of diagonal spots, they should be facing from Litchfield towards the building because Litchfield Terrace is a one-way horseshoe that starts on the opposite side of your building and comes out on your side. So obviously, we're not going to have cars. If you're going to face, you don't want them facing inwards. You want them facing outwards towards Walker Street. If you're considering, you follow what I'm saying?
Yep.
I mean, so, because, yeah, it doesn't work if they're facing inward because it's coming out. It's coming out on that way. So. It's just, if you're taking that into consideration.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Any other comments? All right. Seeing on, can we motion to continue, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-17 for variances at 84 Walker Street to be continued to June 23rd, 2025.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter.
Second.
Second, Vice Chairman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
I approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to June 23rd, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance.
Member Brier. Member Proko.
Approve continuance.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right. We'll see you June 23rd, folks.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. And just for the public record, this is to public notice of another public notice regarding this petition. All right. Moving on to new business, we have ZBA-2025-18. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Greg Looney, property located at 318 Andover Street. The applicant has applied to the load zone of appeals to subdivide the existing lot at 318 Andover Street. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum frontage and lot width requirements and for any other requirement on load zone ordinance. Good evening, Counselor. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Attorney James Harrington for the plaintiff, I mean, for the applicant. And I believe you have the plan coming up electronically. Is that right? We have a hard copy if necessary, so. And a large hard copy if you need it on the camera.
Thank you.
Grab an easel for them? I think there's an easel over there, Greg.
There's an easel in the corner if you want to use that. It looks like it's available.
Right. Turn left. Right behind you.
I think you have to just come in and put it where the red tape is. Is that right, Mr. Katrumbis? Yeah, just come on in, sir. It's fine. For public access and view and- Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So we're here seeking a variance to the minimum lot frontage requirements. It also, you know, upon review of the application, it turns we also are seeking variance to the minimum lot width, which, very similar issue. Additionally, during the application review, we may also be seeking a variance to the minimum landscape area for the front portion of the yard as well, which we did not initially anticipate. So this property initially consisted of two separate lots that, you know, over time merged for zoning purposes. Currently, my client, Mr. Looney, intends to develop parcel two, which would be the newly created lot on the property. Parcel one has an existing home that will be remaining. We also, Bob Contrero, the owner of that property, is also here with us tonight. My understanding is they'll be, that property will eventually be renovated and sold separately, assuming we obtain approval here tonight. This property, because it was created, you know, quite a long time ago, is, the shape of it is such that it's, you know, long and narrow coming off East Merrimack Street, which creates the hardship based on the shape of the lot. We are allowed to, we meet all the minimum lot area requirements of both lots, but because of that, we're not able to meet the frontage requirements on East Merrimack Street. And, you know, a review of properties on East Merrimack Street on both sides does indicate that this would be not an exception necessarily. There are several other properties that also have similar lot frontage, including to the left end, to the right of this property, which only have, I think, three or so more feet of frontage than this proposed lot, parcel two would have. So we believe that this relief can be granted without, you know, any substantial detriment to the neighborhood. One of the issues that has been raised, speaking with the butters, and then I think the very last minute exhibit of sort was, came through that we just saw, I think, about an hour and a half ago. And it, you know, and it concerns the groundwater runoff on the property, which is something that my client already planned to address after speaking with the butters. I mean, when he's finished with this project, we think it'll be an improvement over the existing conditions. He plans on installing, you know, a recharge system as additional to, was it, rain gardens, you know, as well. So if anything, the issue with the groundwater runoff is going to be substantially mitigated. So. With regard to the landscape, open space requirements in the front portion of the property, I know Dylan had mentioned perhaps having a tandem driveway on the side of the home, which we're really not too keen on. So I guess what we would, you know, if it looks like the board wasn't inclined to grant that variance, that we would be looking to continue so that we can see what we can do to rework the plans to at least mitigate the concerns. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counselor, for your presentation. If you have any further comments, we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition is petition. Good evening, sir.
Michael Moran, Mike Moran, 498-3 East Merrimack Street, a budding. I did send over some pictures, but I got a hard copy of some photos that I'd like to share.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. You can start.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm just going to kind of read off on the-
Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
Want to just follow? So approximately about eight years ago, there was an extension made to a backyard on 292 Andover Street. The house that is based on the elevation hillside on 487, 489 East Merrimack Street has sustained significant property damage since the project was completed. Working with the homeowner of 289 Andover Street to resolve the issue and find a solution was unsuccessful, it was unsuccessful after many attempts. The homeowner at the time, Dave, who lived at 487, 489 East Merrimack Street, he, after several attempts and not getting anywhere, he was independently took action to prevent excessive damage to his property to try to move the water that was building up in his basement. He had to install a sump pump. I took a picture of a similar model. It's very expensive to put in, and it still runs to this day, running out the back of the yard, the front of his house. On page two, there's a bunch of flooding pictures of water runoff and heavy downpour. These pictures were taken in 2023 by a tenant that lived there that he submitted. Now, this is two years ago, and the property that was, the backyard that was extended was many years ago, at least eight or plus. After that, after the project was completed on Andover Street and was finished, cleanup efforts were continued for several weeks as water, mud, rock, debris was flowing down the hillside, the elevated hillside, onto the driveway, his driveway in mind because they had gen each other at the property line. There's just a chain link fence that separates our two driveways. Eventually, both driveways had to be replaced because of sporadic frost heaves and sinkholes showing up in the driveways. We, both driveways were replaced at separate times, but the frost heaves, the sinkholes still continue to this day. Dave had then attempted to help prevent the mud and debris that was riding down the driveway going into East Merrimack Street. Retaining wall was put up at the top of the driveway and installed alongside the house. There were stairs and another small retaining, retaining wall against the house to try to keep the debris back from flowing down to the driveways. After, if you could see in the picture on the left, there's a pretty excessive runoff going over that wall that he put in and now is getting ready to fall over, pretty much, from the groundwater pooling there and creating pressure. So there's a lot of money that this gentleman invested in, and it was a total loss for him. On the backside, next picture on page four, I'm experiencing groundwater myself. I've had groundwater in my basement. My house is built in the 60s, and it's, it doesn't hold as good as it should with a new house. The sinking behind my house, a few years after that extension of the backyard, the house directly behind me had installed a skating rink, and that water had kind of diverted off that elevation, that hillside running down. And as you can see, my granite wall, I've been here 30 years, and this just started pushing out over the last four years, five years. It's going to be, I haven't fixed it yet. It's going to be expensive to fix, but I now have pieces of the wall actually falling into my backyard. On the next, on the next set of pictures, I have lived at the residence for 30 years. Uprooting trees were always an issue, not as much as it is today with these two new runoffs coming down. But you can clearly see that the tree is uprooted, and the house has since been sold twice since Dave sold it two years ago. Someone bought it, sold it, and bought it again. But and he does, he is aware there is a couple more dead trees. This big tree that uprooted, you can clearly see, has fallen and created personal and property, personal and property damage to my house. On page five, I have a total loss of a car. I have an uprooted tree that landed on one of my cars that I take, that I store for the winter. It's not a very good car in the winter, so it's stored. There's a huge tree in front of the retaining wall that my neighbor did put to try to hold back the debris running down the driveway. That tree started dying from just all the water and uprooting it. I've lost the pool over the years. I had a branch fall. And the pool's been fixed since then, and that was probably five years ago. The physical image below is the elevated hillside where the subdivision is trying to take place. And then there's the plot plan next to it. The house, because of the variation, it seems like it's going to go recess very deep into that hill, into the elevated hillside. I just wrote a little commentary, and I'm not here to insult anybody's intelligence, but living there 30 years, you try to do as much research. And when you Google it, you know, it's what kind of damage. And the development of steep slope elevated hillside often disturbs these natural functions, resulting in more runoff, faster runoff, less protection in the soil, concentrated high flow, washout landslides, and increasing peak flow, you know, damaging homes below. Dave has went through this with the mudslides and the washouts, and it was disheartening trying to keep that all off the road in the driveway. So I just, you know, I know the house was abandoned for nine years. An investor bought the house at 318 Andover Street, which, it has been abandoned for probably nine years, poor condition. Since then, the house has been repaired. It looks great. The landscaping looks good. And like any investor, you know, there's always, they're always looking for opportunity to maximize their profits. To construct a single-family house, the variance is being requested to relieve the minimum frontages and the minimum, and the lot width requirements to subdivide according to the structure plan. A long, single-family home, three-bedroom family home, will be constructed and will be integrated within the elevation of that hillside. And generating any disruption of that, it's been sitting for decades, is going to cause new water runoff. And then, as we've witnessed twice so far in that area. So with that being said, water flowing down, it's always going to find the lowest point. That's our foundations where our homes sit. And it's devastating damage, you know, retaining walls, it's going to, walkways, foundation. And it's created tens of thousands of dollars in damage, as I've shown in pictures that I've shared with you today. I don't want to be entirely negative here. You know, I think it's fantastic that the low residents, that investors come in and buy rundown and poor-conditioned properties and fix them up, and fix them up. I think it gives neighboring homes a little bit of pride of ownership to take, you know, add some curb appeal to their house and help keep the neighborhoods clean. However, when you consider the devastation of my neighbor, Dave, who is no longer there, and what he witnessed, so what I've witnessed over the years with him and personally myself, it's disheartening. So in light of it, I'm just strongly urging, you know, the committee to take advantage in any effort that they may be able to stop potential damage to our homes and not approve this application at the time. I've been a long-term resident for 30 years, my neighbor 15 years. And we're the one that's going to be left to deal with this cleanup, as I've been dealing with for a very long time. The other picture that I have here of the street, just to show you, there are several multifamily homes in that area. There is houses across the street from where the project is being proposed that have off-street parking reserved, so they can park off the street without getting ticketed. And there's a couple of, there's an apartment building, a few lots up on the left side. If you've been on East Merrimack Street, you know, that we, there's a bottom, and then it goes up, and we're all at the bottom. So water runoff, it does pool up there. There is catchpatens down there, and a lot of times, the neighbors and I will pitch in, because a lot of the debris, dirt and gravel will run down, and if we don't pitch in to try to keep those drains clear, then the water builds up, and it ponds in the road. It creates a pond in that road. And you can also see, if you've driven down East Merrimack Street, the road's pretty rough. There's a lot of houses on this hillside that the water runs down, it runs into the road. And you can see in the picture all these big cracks and crevices in front of this property. And if you continue up either side of East Merrimack Street, it continues on. There's portholes everywhere, there's big cracks, there's actually a cone in the road right now as a caution to be careful, because there's a lot of big cones. And again, I think it's, I think it's great we clean up our neighborhoods, and I appreciate the fact that I'm aware, and my neighboring, my neighbors are aware, that Mr. Looney is an investor. This is how he makes his income, right? That's what he does. That's how he provides for his family. And all I'm asking, we're not here to hurt his pocket. We're here to try to not hurt our pocket, because we can't keep putting, you can't keep calling homeowners' insurances and putting claims in, because it comes to a point where you become a risk, and your insurance either goes through the roof, or you could possibly be dropped. And that's a major concern. So there's a lot of safety issues. That tree that fell and landed on the car, my father sits in the driveway, I'm glad it was cold that day. He wasn't out there. And this is not me, this is just true safety concerns. There is also a high volume of traffic that comes in off of Andover Street. They turn down the side streets going down East Merrimack onto Stackpole Street, because they were trying to avoid all the traffic congested where Nesmith Street meets Andover, where Andover meets High Street. It gets really congested there sometimes. So when you see the amount of traffic coming down, it's, it's, sometimes it looks like a low connector. There's a lot of traffic there. Three-bedroom home, the average, you know, the average cars per house is probably at least three in that area with all the multifamily homes. Three-bedroom house, I'm assuming there would be more than two cars possibly. I'm not saying parking, but where it is congested, soon as you turn on there, that's where all this is happening. Over my 30 years there, I have seen school buses come up Stackpole trying to take a left to go up toward, up East Merrimack Street to the Sullivan School, and they had to make a two-point turn. They would have to pull back up a little and pull back, because cars are parked up on the side. And the winter's even worse, because there's no front yards. You can see where all these cars have permitted parking. It's really hard to keep the snow cleared off the sideways, and whatever snow is cleared, people now try to park up on the curb to keep their cars off the road from getting wiped out by a plow truck that comes down or what have you. And when they do that, it doesn't allow neighbors to walk down, down the sidewalks in the wintertime. It's very tough. Our mailman, when he hits this section of our neighborhood, because we're on that bottom hill, and there's no, there's a lot of off-street parking, he's walking in the road half the time. And it's just, it's not a safe condition, and anything that we can do to minimize it, I would greatly be appreciated. That's my concern, and it's no offense to anybody, I just, it's my home. Been there 30 years. I don't wanna be like Dave and move. I raised my family there, and my intent's to pass it down to my daughter, so. I thank you for taking the time, and I thank you for the members that have come out and talked to the neighboring houses. I appreciate them taking some of them on a Saturday, so that means that, you know, you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing, and we appreciate that and hearing us out. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you tonight? Benjamin Williams. I am the neighbor at 509 East Merrimack Street. And, well, you know, my neighbor really said everything that I could have said, and he said it very well. So I'd just like to second all of those concerns. Those are the same concerns that I have for my, my family of three children, my wife and mother-in-law. And we have experienced a great deal of damage. 321 Andover Street in 2021 had a, similar to the ice rink next door to the right, to up to our left, 321, the owner of that house, who we know, very nice people, but you know, they put in a basketball court in the backyard, and they dug everything up. And the same problems happened, right? We had extensive damage to our foundation, we had water intruding into the house, things that never happened before. We had rodent infestation. Cost us thousands of dollars. We're still trying to mitigate it because of the unique issues that water causes in this particular area, on this particular hill. The property where we're trying to, you know, put a house, again, I'd just like to second, we appreciate the reinvestment into the neighborhood. No, no, no hard feelings here, and my able brother counsel here did a good job of explaining what they're trying to do and talked about mitigating that water damage. If we're unsuccessful in getting this variance denied tonight, I would request that we get a more detailed follow-up on that mitigation plan to see exactly what that mitigation, water mitigation would look like. Because my current understanding of construction and mitigating water doesn't comport with the ability to do that level of mitigation, perhaps for his proposed house, but what happened, what happens to our house? My home is currently virtually uninsurable because of the damage that has occurred on the lot prior to the current ownership. Trees falling on my roof, threatening the well-being and safety of my family. You know, these are things that happen, again, because of that unique water irrigation issue on that hill. And putting a house in there would make that significantly worse. And it's just something that we neighbors look at and know from experience. We know what's gonna happen when that amount of disruption goes in. Lastly, when I bought my house, we looked into this lot. One of the reasons why we were comfortable buying is we knew that it wasn't buildable, right? Changing, putting a house there, and I hate to be the guy that gets in someone's way of making money and making progress, but putting, putting a house in there radically changes what it feels like to live in my home. All other considerations aside, radically changes. And I'd just like to see the neighborhood stay intact the way it is. We're barely holding things together as it is, my neighbor again pointed out. It's difficult. We have a lot of unique challenges. Putting, putting a house in that slope in that area would significantly worsen what we're dealing with. So that's about all I have to say, as my neighbor has, has said as about as good as it can be said. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rich Anthony. I live right across the street from the proposed building site. And the only thing I will bring up at this point, again, because my neighbors have done such a good job, is that there are some very, very large trees that are on that lot right now. And if you take those trees out, you're going to increase the level of the water damage that's gonna come down that hill, because I know for a fact that trees hold the ground and will sop up some of that water. As it is, we get tons of water in that, in that street. And just to further talk about a little of what my neighbor said, in the winter especially, we are constantly shoveling out the drains for the, for the water that comes down from the two sides of the streets, because we are at the very bottom of that location. And there are two drains, one's right in front of my home, one's just a little ways down, and we are constantly shoveling to keep those open, so that they'll at least drain. If not, we do get the pooling, and it's, it's pretty crazy. So, and he already mentioned traffic, so I'm not gonna go into that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor. All right, seeing that the public hearings closed, we're gonna open questions and comments to the board, but I just wanted to, for the applicant, did you, did you wanna make any comments before we open up comments to the board, sir? About anything? Address any concerns or talk about anything?
Yeah, I think the idea would probably go for a continuance to get a civil engineer. I don't know if you've been out there and seen all the, there's a lot of trees that have fallen down and kinda piled up on the lot. I did speak to his wife, and there is a big tree, like literally on the edge, that would obviously be taken down, because I know that tree previously fell on their house. I mean, the, if you saw the one that's, I think, abutting, 509?
509.
Yeah.
Right, 509.
Yeah. So I talked to Mark O'Hara. We were gonna, the idea is to put a few stacked retaining walls, have grass, grass the whole way down to absorb all that water, to kinda make like a natural rain garden, and then have a recharge system, like for the house itself, so that anything that comes from the gutters goes into a recharge system.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Let me just move forward with comments, questions from the board here. The chair recognizes Mr. Bier. Mr. Bier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All my concerns are with the excessive water runoff. I've read the comments from the abutters. And I watched a very scary video today that said to me, I can't pass judgment on this tonight. I'm not so sure that, and I'm a proponent of the building, as your abutters have said, they're not, they're not against repurposing a home or new construction. I've certainly been an advocate of that. But I think this is, I think it's frightening. And without you being able to, without you having the opportunity to better tell me how you could prevent or mitigate this, in fairness to you, I'd like to hear that. If there is no continuance sought, and I was to pass judgment tonight, in no way, no way would I vote in favor of your petition.
No, I didn't, we didn't get to see the video, because we got it, I got it on my phone, so-
Well, just regardless of the video, you heard the concerns expressed by the abutters?
Yes, that's, that's why we-
And do you disagree with the damage that the excessive water runoff has caused over the years?
I think what we'd like the opportunity to do is to present more information that would satisfy the board that what we're going to do on the property is going to mitigate the issue versus exacerbate, I mean, we're not gonna solve the neighborhood's issues. This isn't an issue that's particular to this property, right?
That's all we want you to solve, is the issues particular to this property. And what that, and we believe that there was a problem with excessive water runoff.
Right, so-
Solve that one, and you got a shot.
So we would like the opportunity to present you with enough evidence that we're gonna-
Have you spoken with these gentlemen prior to tonight?
I've, I've only spoken to 509's wife, yeah, yesterday.
Yeah.
She's the one who told me about the tree that fell next to the big tree that's there, that went through the roof. I don't know where the waters, I don't know which property that's coming from.
No, you both, both, both sides have recorded themselves very professionally tonight. There's no doubt about that. But I would advocate for you getting together, not only in an effort to satisfy this board, but to satisfy the concerns of those neighbors. I, I really believe they have a legitimate concern here. And as I look at it now, it's just too troubling for me to pass judgment.
I agree.
But I wanna give you that opportunity to be fair on what could be, potentially be done to alleviate this problem and potentially satisfy these abutters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think, thank you, Mr. Bier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tough situation on this hill for sure, and I don't know if addressing this parcel will solve it for a lot of you. I know that at 495 and 487, it's really the properties above you that are contributing to this, and that's 292 and 304 Andover Street. And then I think whatever happens on this lot, I don't think will do much to alleviate the neighbor at 509. I think that regardless of how good your engineering is, you're responsible today to not cause any runoff from your property to your adjacent properties. So that's the engineering standard that you'll be setting. But the existing properties around you don't have that criteria, and their runoff is going into your properties, the ones at 292, 304. And then for 509 East Merrimack, the property at 318. So what we can do is help what we can to solve this problem. I think a civil engineered plan showing the grading is critical. I noticed the document that you provided for the building plan shows basically a level foundation on all four sides. You've got about 20 feet of grade change from front to back, just in the footprint area. And I think it's 40 feet of grade change from front to back on the site. So it's hard to believe that your footprint of your house is gonna be level on all four sides, in any event. I don't think the relief is significant in view of the frontage of the adjacent properties. I think I counted seven adjacent properties with under 80 feet, without going too far. So there's a lot of precedent for that area not reaching the 80-foot dimension. But I would say that I'd like to see the tandem parking to blend in better with the neighborhood. I don't know what that'll do for your grading situation. I don't know if it matters much to the grading, because you're not showing much grading here, but-
I was thinking of possibly doing like a two-car garage under, and then have spots in front of that giving the grading, because we're obviously gonna have to step up every, whatever, 20 feet-
That makes a lot of sense.
Grass.
Okay, so now there's some reason why you're looking for the parking to be in front.
Yeah, and then I, speaking with 509, they have this huge tree that's like ready to fall over that I, in my opinion, should be taken down, because it's, it's not supporting water at this point. It's, I mean, I think it's pretty close to- Oh, there it is. Yeah, yeah, they had a tree fall through their house. And I know the house was in disarray for many, many years, and the guy was like, "Don't touch the fence, don't touch my tree," and everything's kinda just, so the idea is to clear all that up. There's not much growth on the actual lot itself. It's just all trees that are top of down over time. But the two-car garage under would then have parking spots in front of that.
Okay, so your plan that you submitted tonight doesn't show that?
No, it's, it was kinda like all brought up within the last several days, so that's why we just came to get feedback, and then we're gonna go back and-
So I think it's important for us to see what you're doing from a grading standpoint?
Yep.
And how you're gonna be successful not allowing any runoff from your site to go into the street or any neighbors?
Yep.
Right? And that at least starts the ball rolling for correcting the problem down the road for other sites, but I think that's the standard you have to do regardless. And that, we should see that.
Yep.
Okay, so I like the idea of continuing as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think a continuance should be warranted in this instance. Obviously, the applicant, like, all the concerns of the neighbors did not come up until this past weekend. For the applicant, he was only concerned, I think he said, he only got concerned from one tree. And, but now we have all these issues with stormwater, drainage, and all that stuff, which, and to Dennis's point, the site plan really should include the topographical breakdown, because it's critical, especially with the layout of that land. Also, as far as the plans for the building, as far as the building, proposed building is concerned, is how that's gonna fit in with regards to the grading, and, you know, and like you mentioned, the underground, now you're gonna do underground garages.
Yeah, we'll use the same plan. We'll just take the farmer's porch off. I was trying to make it look good in the front, and then, you know, come from down below, and then that'll help us step up as well. and then that'll help us step up as well as we go up.
Yep.
Already have the light hour on it, like I was doing it, we just couldn't get it.
Yeah.
Quick enough.
And that tree you mentioned, I mean, I went by earlier and I was driving, and yeah, that tree looks like, it's basically overhanging the whole, the whole street. It's almost like a covering to that effect, so whatever you plan on doing with that as well. So, I would suggest that a continuance on this would be, would be warranted on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callen. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I was out there yesterday, happened to be a light rain, and you can just see, I mean, what happens in that whole neighborhood. So, understanding that it's not all your issue to remedy, there needs to be an engineering plan so we see where the water runoff goes, so it's not causing more erosion on both sides. Landscape in plan would probably be nice, right, to see what we're going to do to mitigate any additional work there. But I think something is doable here, the right thing. The neighbors seem to not be against growth, they just don't want any more damage to their property. And the fact that you're willing to go back to the drawing board and kind of put all this stuff together is a good start. I would talk to the neighbors. They seem open, good people, and kind of get all on the same page. You know, what you did up on Andover Street is great from where it was to what it is now, outstanding, and we like to see that happen. But just standing on East Merrimack Street, looking up into that hill, I mean, unfortunately, you know, the issue's going to continue regardless of what you do up there, all along that kind of dead zone between Andover and East Merrimack Street. But especially with the two abutting neighbors, what we can do to remedy any additional erosion towards their property, one of them has, his retaining wall is getting pushed out from the water. So, any additional water into that yard would be an utmost disaster for him, so I'd like to see what comes with the continuance. I think it's a smart move. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I think enough has been said, and I think the fact that you are requesting for a continuance so you could get more in-depth information and provide to your neighbors, I think, you know, that would be in a positive step. You know, as member Hovey mentioned, it doesn't sound like your neighbors are opposed to what you're doing, they just don't want to pay the price. So, I'd be in favor of the continuance, and I'd be looking forward to the new plans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. So, we'll move to a continuance here, and I do want to say on a side note, Ms. Callen, I think, in my opinion, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman, the applicant, the neighbors, you guys have been very civil, very respectful, very amenable to each other, so I think that it goes a long way in terms of a plan that meets everyone's needs. So, I know, I appreciate that, and my colleagues do as well. Mr. Katronvus, when is the next available opening in terms of hearing, sir?
The 23rd is open as well.
All right, is that okay for the applicant, June 23rd?
Yeah, I just couldn't do it quick enough. I already talked to the engineer, we did a bunch of stuff already, so I can change the plans to like a garage under and get all the civil stuff done.
Okay.
Well, you're going to have to go in front of planning as well, right?
That's after, yeah. So, we'll postpone, that's just to make it an actual...
So, you already, do you already have scheduled a planning, or you're just going for us first?
Yeah, the next meeting on...
Next one week. Yes, they're on the 16th.
Yes.
I mean, if they can get it done and get it in front of planning first, and then I guess whatever works for you guys, but...
Yeah, I think we need this in order, because then it's just a square footage thing, so we can do this first.
They have to approve the subdivision, so...
Which, what do we, yeah, we probably won't come.
Up to you, just, but to remind also the public too that you, you're not, we're not the only board you have to come in front of, you also have to go in front of planning as well.
Just to note, planning would not take the plans unless they were done in like the next 48 hours, so...
Yeah, it's 48 before the meeting.
No, generally, for something like this, they'd want a full week, which is today, but, you know, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by my colleagues here? Yeah, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I just want to say when we're talking about a grading plan, an engineered plan, we're talking about a grading engineered plan for both parcels.
I already did the light hour, I did it with the engineer earlier. I just, we already did the light hour on it with the grading plan, he just has to put it on a plan, and then we, you know, the recharge system and the rain, all that stuff.
That's including parcel one?
Correct, we did the whole parcel. We did from Andover Street, the top down to the bottom of East Merrimack.
And so, we'll be mitigating water runoff from parcel one onto the property at 509 Merrimack Street, East Merrimack Street?
Yeah, so parcel, sorry, 509. Yeah, that's, this is the other parcel. Sorry, can I say that again?
So, parcel one abuts 509 Merrimack Street?
Correct.
And I would suggest that we help solve the drainage problem, the runoff from parcel one, so that you have no runoff onto 509.
Okay.
Because you're asking for us to extend the parcel two into parcel one, so we're influencing parcel one, so we should be solving parcel one at this point as well.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. And there's no further comments, we forward over the motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion for ZBA 2025-18 for variance at 318 Andover Street to be continued to June 23rd?
All right, motion, Mr. McCarthy, continue.
Second.
Second, by the vice chairman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved, continues.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved, continues to June 23rd, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approved, continuance to June 23rd.
Member Brier. Member Prokop.
Approved, continuance to June 23rd, 2025.
And Member Hovey.
Approved.
All right, the matter's been continued, we'll see you June 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, have a good night, folks.
This gentleman, he said he can speak still, but I think we're done. He wants to talk.
Greg, Greg, Greg?
Mr. Looney?
We got another one coming in, they'll probably use it. Thanks.
He just wants to know when the next meeting is.
All right, just for the public record, the next meeting for this matter is June 23rd. There'll be no other public notice regarding this petition?
Is there going to be a register letter going back out again? Or are you...
No.
Nope.
All right.
June 23rd, 6:30.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Considerate.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda on the continued business, we have ZBA-2025-22. The petition is special permanent variance, the applicant is Hoon Properties LLC, property located at 535 Patakeet Boulevard. The applicant is prior to the laws of appeals to construct three residential units at 535 Patakeet Boulevard. The subject property is located in suburban mixed-use SMU zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the lottery per dwelling unit requirement, special permit approval per Article 12.1 for three residential units on one lot, and for any other relief required in law zoning ordinance. Good evening, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary and Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Hoon Properties LLC. With us tonight, we have David Hoon. David is the principal of the LLC. We have Matt Hammer, of course, from Landplex. In advance of tonight's hearing, we have provided the board with the site plan, with the floor plans, the elevations, as well as a color rendering of the finished product, and of course, my narrative. The subject property is located at 535 Patakeet Boulevard, located within the suburban mixed-use zoning district. The lot consists of approximately 29,900 square feet of land. It's the applicant's intent to redevelop the property by demolishing the existing structures on the property and constructing three townhouse-style residential units on the property. Each unit will consist of two bedrooms, two and a half baths, and about 1,500 square feet of living space. Because the property is located within the 100-year floodplain, the units will be elevated off the ground, and that allows for more than sufficient off-street parking for this proposal. And the fact that the property is located within the 100-year floodplain also required that the applicant go before the Conservation Commission in order to be able to build within the floodplain. So, the Conservation Commission issued an order of condition, a standard order of conditions at its April 23rd meeting. I attached a copy of that recorded decision to my narrative for your reference, so you should have that as well. So, in order to develop the property as proposed here, we're again proposing to demolish the three structures. There's an existing single-family home, there's a garage, and there's a large shed, all of which are in horrible condition and ready to fall down. In terms of the access to the new structures will be by way of a driveway off of Melrose Avenue. The existing access point on Patakeet Boulevard will be discontinued, we'll no longer need that. In terms of the relief being requested tonight, we're requesting relief pursuant to 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and we're also requesting a special permit pursuant to 12.1.3 in order to construct three dwelling units on one lot. So, in terms of the relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit, the suburban mixed-use zoning district requires that each dwelling unit have 10,000 square feet of land associated with it. In this case, as I mentioned, we have a total of 29,900 square feet, so we're short by about 33 feet per dwelling unit or 100 feet in total, however you want to look at it. Either way, I think the request is minimal. In terms of the comments that the staff issued relative to this project, the comments are supportive of the project. The comments point out that the relief is minimal, that the intent of the proposal aligns with the character of the existing neighborhood, that the porous pavement that's proposed for the drive area is a positive attribute for this project, and that the addition of three housing units helps the city meet its goals pursuant to the Lowell Forward Housing Production Plan, all of which align with the criteria of a special permit being issued for this property. We've reviewed the engineering comments, we have no concerns about those comments. The city's traffic engineer points out that the removal of the access point on Patakeet Boulevard would be welcome. Otherwise, I'd suggest that the comments are factual and really no need to elaborate any further. If the board has any need for us to elaborate, we'll be happy to. So, I think at this point, a good time to turn the presentation over to Matt so he can go through the plans with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening. Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. So, as attorney Gary had pointed out, a critical part of this project was doing work in a floodplain. So, we went forward and worked through what we felt as though was the critical permit to get, which was an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And through that proceeding, we go through drainage, we go through the performance standards of the Wetlands Protection Act, we go through the siding of the building, a flow-through foundation with porous pavement, and obtain that order of conditions. So, that satisfied the initial layout of the property. You know, existing, it's a dilapidated building, it's a single-family dwelling, and with that will be the redevelopment of that into a three-unit flow-through foundation, essentially a triplex, where the vehicles actually park underneath the building, which this rendering shows that was done by Gavin Sullivan. You park underneath the building, there's a front entrance way that brings you up to the second story, and you live on the second and third story, which will afford you views of the Merrimack River, actually. So, it's going to be a nice location for the three residences. And essentially, the property is generally flat. We took away the curb cut that's existing off of Patakeet Boulevard, which is a net benefit of the safety of the property, utilage by the triplex, and they'll be entering and exiting off of Melrose Avenue. Full utilities will come off of Melrose Avenue. There was an error on the plan showing trees on the existing, so that's been corrected, and we're proposing four shade trees, as well as the property will be fully landscaped. That would be reviewed by DPD as well. Has plenty of parking, porous pavement drainage, we know it's going to drain well, because we know there's a sandy substrate underneath the property, and it fits into the property setback from the roadway. And with living on the second and third floor, you're not going to be living on the ground level, which would be a net benefit for the living and the structure being up higher off the ground on that second and third story. I can put it to the board with any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. All right, if you have no further comments, we'll move the hearing to the public. Does anyone else want to add, counselor?
No, I would just suggest that I think the proposal is a modest proposal considering the size of the lot and considering the nearby developments. So, the applicant was very reserved in what we're proposing here tonight, but I feel it fits the character of the neighborhood, we meet the criteria for the variances, and we respectfully request approval this evening.
Thank you, counselor, for your presentation. All right, we'll move the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing that portion of the hearing is closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor, seeing that the public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I love the project, just to say. I don't understand the site plan and the elevations in the floor plan, so if you could help me, please. The site plan does not match the floor plan, and I'm not sure what I'm looking at when I look at the rendering, because am I looking at the rear elevation or the front elevation in the rendering? And the rendering, again, I don't think matches the floor plan either, because the middle bay, anyway. Which side faces the river?
So, it's a flow through, okay? So, this is facing the river. So, the entrance foyer is here.
So, you need a walkway to the front door?
So, you park underneath, you come up, you come in to a side door here that brings you up the stairs you said before. This is, that's what you're...
Right. So, the rendering shows, right, okay, the rendering's backwards.
Is the deck...
Okay.
If you can get it closely enough to recognize that, does the rendering mean something?
It's basically backwards.
Correct.
Okay. And so, the side that we see is the side on Patakeet Boulevard, is the side in the rendering, and in the parking lot side is the deck and the stairs. Okay. And the site plan is also off... And the site plan is also off, because the footprint jogs, and your footprint on your site plan does not.
You're what?
The footprint jogs, so the middle unit comes forward a bit?
Mm-hmm.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, so it does, this box is off here, it jogs.
And also, in the front on Pataca Boulevard, it jogs forward a bit? So, we have two corrections to make. All right. Now, I understand what we're looking at. Thank you, because the rendering threw me.
Yeah, it happened, was it the site plan, and then the architectural plans came afterwards? So, that correction doesn't miss, so.
No worries. Okay. Is there a reason why there's so much green space behind these units, and why they're pulled so close to Pataca Boulevard?
Yeah, there is.
Hmm.
And the reason is that when you do work in a floodplain, you're only available to utilize those elevations that are existing toward your own purpose. So, there's a balance that happens with the existing property. So, with that, what happens is that we're working with the developed area in order to balance whatever that volume displaced is on the existing conditions to propose. So, there's a balance of this compensatory storage chart here that has to be met in order to get, obtain an Order of Conditions to match the requirement. Where this drops, an elevation in the rear, that doesn't afford us any benefit for actually being able to put this project, or this development within this area, that we show that compensatory storage.
Okay. I like that answer better than the one that I thought I'd hear, so. The one I thought I'd hear is you're preparing for some zoning changes that allow you to build three more units in the back.
We actually could have maybe done more here.
Right.
So, we actually had gone through different development scenarios.
Okay.
You could have done a restaurant.
Right, right, right.
Above, or drive, you know, there's many different things you could have done here, but this was the easiest, most economical project to put in here than a commercial style.
Yep. It's beautiful. And we have three units on a site that's 30,000 square feet required, 29,900 provided, and we're looking for relief of 100 square feet. So, that's great. We're looking for relief for the, a special permit for three residential units on one Is there one other relief piece that we're looking for? Is that it?
I don't believe so.
That's it?
Correct.
Outstanding. And so, the condition would be that you'll work with DPD to provide a full landscape plan with a minimum of four shade trees along Pataca Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. All set. Thank you very much. Very well-prepared, very well-presented. I'm sorry about the flip of the rendering, but now I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, fantastic project. This is, makes total sense. The request for the relief is minimal. The lot has been, I don't know how long that single-family's been sitting there, not, nothing going on. We've gone by it so many times, it's just.
Being vandalized, it's the habit.
Yeah. And again, you're being, yes, being very restrained with what you could have done with that commercial, you know, restaurant or something like that could have been good for the area, but I think, yeah, more feasible thing would be the more housing, which is well-needed, so, but I'd be highly in approval of this with the conditions, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have no questions. This is a great project. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this does look like it's going to be a nice project. Definitely an improvement in the neighborhood. I'm constantly driving in that area, hanging out by the Merrimack River, and I always thought, I wish I could buy that and do something with it, but somebody better got ahead of me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your redevelopment of this highly-visible eyesore is essential, and it's welcomed by the city. I thank you for taking this on. Your proposal is dramatic, and you had to be commended. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. I think my colleague said it all. I think this is going to be a great project. Obviously, Counselor, you and your clients show great restraint. You could have went very lavish with the projects or housing your business that you could have proposed, but I think it's a minimal relief, and I think it's a great addition to a lot that is really in disrepair. So, I have no objections. And then, you're okay with the condition of the working DPD for the landscape plan with the shade tree?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If there's no further comments, can we have a motion, please? Oh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I just want to add the second condition, that the applicant submit a revised site plan to show the correct building footprint. Okay. Sorry.
All right. And you're okay with that condition as well? Okay. All right. If there's no further comments, can we have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-22 for a special permit and variance at 535 Pataca Boulevard. Variants, approval required in Section 5.1 for relief for the lot area per dwelling unit, and special permit under Article 12.1 for three residential units on one parking lot with the two previously mentioned conditions.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved the conditions.
Member Brier.
Whoop.
Member Prokop.
Approved the conditions.
And Member Havi.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-21 petition. It's a variance, applicant is BCFC Park LLC, Inc., property located at 278 Central Street. The applicant has applied to Low Zoning Ordinance Appeals to expand the existing 27-unit building at 278 Central Street. The addition consists of an additional living space, and no units are being added. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use DMU in multifamily mid-rise overlay MFOM zoning district. The project requires variance approval from zoning ordinance under Section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area ratio, FAR, and any other relief required on low zoning ordinance.
May I have my Peter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. Good evening, sir.
Excellent. For the record, my name is Aiden Church. I'm an attorney with Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street, Gloucester. If you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen with you. I have a quick presentation for you.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Okay, here tonight, representing BCFC Park Street LLC regarding 278 Central Street. The proposed project tonight is just the rearward expansion of the existing structure. We are demolishing and reconstructing, reconstructing on an expanding footprint, the wood portion of the structure in the rear. The existing building is a mixed-use structure, the ground floor is a restaurant, and above that is 27 boarding rooms, which will remain boarding rooms. On June 2nd, we were at the planning board for a site plan review, special permit to alter and expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure, and a special permit to actually just legally permit the longstanding boarding house use. So, we received those three approvals last week, and we're here tonight seeking a variance for floor area ratio. So, we're in the downtown mixed-use district. It's a single lot that fronts on Central Street and Green Street. The existing structure was constructed somewhere around 1824, according to the assessor's records. It currently encroaches over the front, left and right side property lines. The, in the front on the left, it's actually city property, the layout of Green Street and Central Street, and the right, the right side encroachment is subject to an easement over that adjacent property. So, as I said, it's a mixed use. The restaurant is as of right, and the boarding rooms were approved last week by the planning board. Again, those boarding rooms were existing for some amount of time, we don't know how long, so we just thought it was best practice to just get those legally permitted. During renovations that are being performed pursuant to a building permit, the applicant found some structural, some structural issues with the existing structure that ended up being much more work than anticipated, so to recoup some of those additional costs, the applicant's looking to just expand the existing structure without adding any more additional rooms. So, as I said, the relief that we're looking for tonight is just a variance from the floor area ratio requirement. As I said, the planning board has already taken care of the site plan review approval and the two special permits. As you know, the dimensional requirements in the DMU are pretty, there's not very many requirements at all, just 25 feet of frontage, which we comply with, and then a four-to-one floor area ratio. We currently comply, which is why this can't be, you know, permitted as an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming situation. This is actually creating a new dimensional non-conformity. So, the existing floor area ratio is 3.4. With the addition in the rear, we're moving that up to 4.2. In terms of square feet, we're about 650 feet over the requirement. So, I just have all the plans here, which I'm sure that you've already looked at. I'm happy to go through these or go back if you have any specific questions with regard to any of them. That's in red in the rear is the rearward expansion. That expansion is wholly, you know, compliant with regard to setbacks, for which there aren't any in the DMU, so, you know, we're entirely within the lot in that respect as well. These are just the existing conditions, and then the proposed floor plans, we're adding out the foundation on the basement, and then that's the first floor on the left, second and third floors, and then just the fourth floor and the roof plans. Then we have all the renderings of the proposed structure as well, where, you know, this is part of an extensive renovation of the building, as I mentioned earlier, so hoping to, you know, make this look as new. Side view here, side view there, and then here's just a cross-sectional. Here is the aerial view. You can see a little better from, on the following pictures, the area in which we are expanding. Here's the front of the structure. So, here's the right side, and you can see the wood portion of the structure there. That's what is, like, really structurally deficient, and that's getting totally demolished and reconstructed, again, on a slightly expanded footprint. Here's that view a little further down the road from the right. Here's the rear view itself. So, just the standards, as you know, for a variance under 11.2.3 are that owing to the circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land affecting the locus, and not the zoning district more generally. A literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, and relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or derogating from the intent of the ordinance. Here, the lot conditions are that, though the lot is not undersized in terms of zoning, the lot is very small relative to all of the other lots in the surrounding neighborhood. It's also undersized relative to the structure. The structure, again, takes up almost the entirety of the lot. It's a four-story structure with a basement, so that four-to-one floor area ratio is a little difficult to meet to begin with. The slight expansion will push us over, but, you know, that's partially due just because the lot is very small and the building is big. So, here's just that view again, so you can see that the structure takes up the majority of the lot. In terms of hardship, so, by right, we can expand the structure only about 400 square feet per floor. Again, we're closer to 550 per floor. The applicant needs this additional value from the structure to fund the necessary structural repairs. So, a literal enforcement of that floor area ratio would create a substantial hardship to the applicant in that he wouldn't be able to sufficiently increase the value of the structure to fund the necessary structural renovation. Finally, the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood and without nullifying the intent of the ordinance. In terms of the public good, we're revitalizing a downtown structure for, to reuse for commercial use, and, again, we're providing a diverse type of affordable housing above. The most impacted lot would be the rear lot. That lot's owned by Attorney Gary, who you just heard from in the last application. He wrote a letter in support, provided that we put signage up in the area. That just says that parking shall not be on any of the adjacent lots. That was a condition to the planning board approvals. We're happy to take that condition here, again, tonight if the board so feels. In terms of derogation, we don't think that it derogates from the intent of the ordinance. Again, it's just a minor expansion of the existing structure, and that floor area ratio is, again, artificially small just because of the relatively small size of the lot. So, thank you. I'll stop sharing my screen. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor, for your presentation. Now, we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, this petition. In opposition, in opposition, seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor, seeing that the public hearing is closed. We're going to open questions or comments to the board. Chair organizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, Counselor. You hit all the points of the requirements for the variance. We're only dealing with the variance for the FAR here, and based on the comments from Peter and what he's provided, he notes that the building is pre-existing non-conforming for FAR, and that the expansion will not cause significant issues and does not derogate from the intent of zoning. And based on what you provided me, it seems to be minimal. Request your existing 3.4, seeking 4.2, which is a difference of 0.8. And, like I said, no further, no additional units are being installed, and it's just to kind of alleviate any of the structural issues that are already existing. So, I would be in support of this, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I have no questions on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great presentation, and I think it's a great repurpose of redevelopment of this property. Hopefully, it improves and cleans up that section of the neighborhood that would make people feel more welcome. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I'm so grateful that this project is happening. The site really needs this kind of investment. I wish all of the units were the size of the ones in the back that are receiving the added square footage, because they're nice micro apartments, if you will, or boarding rooms, but they all have full baths, and some have these small kitchens. They're quite nice, and the relief is minimal, so I really want to support this, and I appreciate the investment the applicant is making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I agree, I think this is a nice project, nice repurpose of the land. Yeah, I don't have any concerns. And then, Counselor, we talked about the condition that you got in terms of signage, and you're agreeable to that, you said, right?
Yep. So, there are three, there are three conditions at the planning board. There was the signage for parking, there was the condition that we submit a full utility plan, which we're happy to. plan, which we're happy to provide, and the final condition was just that I think the legal department is going to take, take a look at the encroachments that are on, well, obviously, the longstanding encroachments, considering that the building was constructed in the early 1800s. But it is over city property, so they're just going to look into whether or not that requires or the city wishes to grant an easement for that, those encroachments. So those are the three conditions, we're happy to take those, again, if the board thinks they're necessary, but obviously, they're in the planning board special permits, so to the extent that, you know, we have to require, we have to abide by those anyways, so it's really up to you.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll adopt the addition, conditions that we talked about here at the planning board as well. So thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-21 for variances at, for variance at 278 Central Street, and the variance is for relief from maximum floor area ratio with the three conditions provided by the planning board.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved conditions.
Member, Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved.
Member Prokop.
Approved with conditions.
And Member Havi.
Approved.
All right, sir, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck on your project.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, minutes for approval from May 29th. Any edits, comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, give a motion, so approve the minutes, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 29th, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
May 29th, 2025.
Yep. Motion by Mr. McCarthy, approve the minutes, second by Mr. Prokop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous, minutes are approved. Any other comments from my colleagues before we adjourn? Seeing none, give a motion to adjourn, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.